Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners Meeting, Committee of the Whole for November 5th, 2024. If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Reports from state and county officials, are there any state or county officials here this morning that would like to address the board?
Good morning. First, I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the prayer circle this morning. I'm the one who feels truly blessed by everyone, but since it's likely the last time I'll be able to clerk a meeting, I just kind of wanted to report to all of you the status of the county clerk's office and to publicly thank my staff. Everyone's been great to work with and they've helped me in ways I can't even begin to thank them for. So besides elections, one of the major events during my year is clerk spend the partnership with the courts in the county clerk's office. This is a division that was something that had been talked about years before me, but after coming on board and assessing the workflow and working with all of the staff and discussing it, it did become evident that the partnership with the courts is a positive move and it's been proving so that it has been. So as with any change, there's been hurdles and challenges, but with communication and the great staff that we're working with on both the clerk's side and the court's side, it's, we're able to work through all those challenges. And so until the clerk's office becomes fully staffed, the court clerks continue to assist and that's greatly appreciated. So I want to let them know how much that's appreciated. I would also be amiss in not publicly thanking my senior deputy, Sarah Vanderburg, who will be your new county clerk. She's been remarkable in taking on a lot of the responsibilities and duties and I can't even begin to express my gratitude. So this county is very fortunate to have such dedicated staff. They're willing to adapt to changes and unforeseen circumstances. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their dedication and let all of you know how fortunate we are. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to stay standing because I can't say it any better than Cindy said. The county clerk and the functions that were with the circuit court, the division of the clerk's offices, as far as I'm concerned, has been going amazing. I think we knew it was a good idea, a good idea to move forward. And thanks to Cindy, thanks to Sarah, and thanks to Inez and Daisy and every, and particularly the staff. My goodness, it's this early in the process to have this much success and having the staffs just do their job seamlessly has been amazing. I do have a trial, a termination of parental rights trial that I have to get to right now. I do have many other things I'd like to at some point be able to address the commissioners on and let you guys know how we're doing. And I want to thank you all for letting the process go forward. We really do try to do the best job we possibly can for this county, just like you guys are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And before we move on, on behalf of the board, Cindy, I just want to let you know how much we appreciate your service. You came in at a very difficult time, a lot of transition, especially with elections and voting. I know it created a lot of stress, a lot of interesting conversations, but you and your staff have done just a phenomenal job guiding the county through this, setting up early voting, making this whole transition possible with really no model before you other than let's figure it out, let's work together as a team and do it. So you've grabbed the reins coming from the courts over to here. You've done some amazing things in a short amount of time. You are appreciated and your thoughts and prayers are with us every step of the way through your journey here in the next couple of months. So, thank you.
Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Ah, give a white Nashville. It is election day, which is a good thing. Sometimes I'm not sure this agenda should have been presented on this day, but it is what it is. I did review that 100-day-plus county administrator transition plan. I do have some concerns on that. I guess when you get to the community who's, what meetings he'll attend and what meetings he won't. It comes down to Middleville, Hastings, and now Dalton are the ones that are there, Community Foundation and United Way. But once again, District 5 is not represented well. I think, you know, so there's quite a few townships that are not represented. I did look at your agenda and one of the concerns I have is the county administration, deputy administration position. It says description of action, "With the recent hiring of a new county administrator and the addition of a new human resource position in the county administration office, the job responsibility of deputy county administrator has been revised." Talks about additional duties. About a year ago, you paid the deputy administrator quite a bit of vacation time. So it's actually adding that position is going to relieve some duties. With the new county administrator coming in, I'm not sure why more duties have been put on the deputy administrator, unless the county administrator isn't able to handle them. So I guess that is a concern of mine coming right off the bat. And that's the way it's presented here in the very description of the job. So, so I said, do I know everything that's going on out there? No. Am I concerned that we're in a position where we're going to start spending and increasing government? Everybody knows I am a small government person, not a big government person, but it looks like we're going, you gave yourselves raises, you raised taxes, you maxed the military out. So there's concerns once again of do we have a conservative board or self-complain, you know, self-proclaimed Republican Party, proven Republican Party people and stuff, but I just see once again, we're going to bigger government, more spending and higher taxes. So I'm not sure that self-proclamation was a good one. So, other than that, thank you and have a good day. I hope everyone's been out to vote. It's a big election day today. Have a good day.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we will move ahead with our agenda. Approval for the October 15th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Is there, is there somebody that'd like to make that motion?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunisin for approval of the October 15th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Next up, interview for Berry County Community Mental Health Authority Board. Is Mr. Stephen Wilson with us this morning? Good morning. Come on down. Good morning. Just to start out, if you would like to tell us a little bit about yourself and about your background and why you see yourself being a good fit for this position, and then we'll allow some questions from commissioners.
All right. Well, I grew up in Hastings. I went away for a while to go to college and then found my way back. But I guess I feel I'm a good fit because I've dealt with mental health challenges my whole life. In particular, the last eight years have been very, very difficult. But if it wasn't for Berry County Mental Health, I don't believe I'd be sitting here right now talking to you. And that's, that's just facts. Without their, without their support and their help, I probably wouldn't be here. But I think my experience lends itself to conveying some sort of experience within the mental health system. So.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Doster used to on this board and we'd like you to start. Do you have questions for Stephen?
I don't at this point. I'm going to wave.
Okay. Commissioner Colton?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Smelker?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Tunisin?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Well, morning, Steve.
Morning.
I just want to say that I've been around the, the mental health issue somewhat as a, as a father and stuff. So I sympathize with anybody that deals with that. And until you've really been around it or dealt with it personally, it's, it's an unbelievable thing to deal with.
It is.
Really grateful that you're here stepping up to do this job. So, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hatfield?
We're required to have a consumer on, on the board for good reason. And I want to really thank you for being willing to step up and share your experiences in that position. It certainly be helpful. So, thank you.
Okay.
Stephen, I saw that you're a member of the Consumer Advisory Team at Berry County Community Mental Health.
Yeah.
What is that position or what do you do there?
Basically, just deal with issues there at the center like, I'm trying to think of an example. We talk about a lot of different things. Like, okay, so one of the things we dealt with at one point was, you know, should they do fire drills and things like that while people are having sessions? Of course, I thought, you know, no, that's not a good idea, you know, we shouldn't be doing that. I told them that maybe we should try to do that from a staff to staff, you know, when patients aren't there. But that's just one example of things that we kind of talk about.
So you're familiar with the staff and you're familiar with, you know, very familiar?
Yeah, I know just about everybody over there.
Fantastic. Well, I appreciate your willingness to serve. This is an open seat for the completion of a term there. And it sounds like with your experience in there that you can be a benefit to that committee. So I appreciate your application.
Thank you.
So, absolutely. Any further questions from the board? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have to get going. I got to watch a bunch of monkeys at Northeastern, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Based on his resume and his connection to Berry County Community Mental Health, I think he would be a really good fit for that board. So the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to appoint Stephen Wilson to serve as the Berry County, on Berry County Community Mental Health Advisory Board for a partial term that begins April 1st, 2024 and expires March 31st, 2027.
So move, Doster.
Support, Hatfield.
Motion by Doster, support by Hatfield to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to appoint Stephen Wilson to serve on the Berry County Community Mental Health Authority Board for a partial term that begins April 1st, 2024 and expires March 31st, 2027. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Morgan from the Berry County Animal Shelter.
Good morning. I am here from the Berry County Animal Shelter requesting to approve to accept the grant from 270 for $10,000 for our TNR grant program. This would cover up to $112 per female cat and $75 for male cat, an additional 20 if there is a pregnant cat that needs to be spayed. We'll be using Bull Creek Vet Office for those vet services.
Okay. Have those rates gone up?
Not since we started with Bull Creek.
Okay. It seemed like they bumped a little bit, but it's been a while since we've covered the numbers on it as well. So, and this is the normal grant that we've done several times over with 270?
Correct.
I don't know how many times we've done it, but we appreciate them continuing the process. About how many cats does that allow us to do?
I do not have the total on that, but it all depends on male to female and if there's pregnant cats that we spay on top of that. In the past years, we've done, like in 2022, we did about 350 cats for the year. 2023, we did 296 cats.
Okay. Wonderful. Seems like we're putting a dent in it, but it's a small dent and the cats are keeping ahead of us, it seems. So, you know.
Right.
But they're doing their job for sure. Okay. Questions for Morgan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, I keep forgetting this process because we have a big problem with feral cats in Nashville. So people trap the cats and they bring them to animal control or to Bull Creek?
So basically, the process is, is they need to stop in to schedule an appointment before you even trap the cat due to, just in case we don't have an appointment the day you trap the cat. So you can plan to trap the cat for that appointment. And then we meet you up at Bull Creek to get you signed in and everything and drop the cat off. And then they pick up the cat at Bull Creek.
Okay. Thank you.
And that is the challenge sometimes is when you trap the cat and when there's actually time to get the cat to you to do it. How, is there a waiting list for that? Do you?
Yeah, we actually, for this grant, we will have at least two to three months already filled.
Two to three months already filled?
Yes.
Okay. And this is not for your house pets. This is for feral cats that are trapped?
Correct. Yep.
So if it comes in and sits on your lap and purrs and everything, okay, we know.
Right.
Okay. Additional questions from commissioners? Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to accept $10,000 from 270, Inc. for purposes of the Trap, Neuter, and Release Program.
So move.
Support, Campbell?
Motion by Tunisin, support by Campbell to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to accept $10,000 from 270, Inc. for the purposes of Trap, Neuter, and Release Program. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Good to see you again.
You too.
Next up, Rachel France, appointments to the Materials Management Planning Committee.
Also Frank Fiala from the, from the Solid Waste Oversight Group as well, chair of the group. Just a couple of comments I'd like to make that many of you are probably aware a ways back, quite a ways back in the 80s, we had seven landfills in Berry County. None of them met requirements with the DNR and the regulations and things that occurred. So at that point, things, the state took over. We had a big landfill in Yankee Springs at Mystic Landfill that exploded and caused the water system and pollution running into Gun Lake and a number of those things. So we were pretty involved in this. At that time, the county was required to create a landfill, have public hearings and do those things. And as a result of the landfill, had to have an oversight group and had to have a plan that the oversight group followed. And so the first one was created in 1983 was the beginning when they closed the seven landfills, opened the one landfill that we have here and created a solid waste oversight group. Then there was a major update to that in 1999 that we all went through, public hearing process. And these are basically what the documents look like. And it was required at the time that the plan be updated every five years. And we're aware that we have not updated that. We kept checking with our, with Eagle and with our legislative people, and they indicated that they're coming out with a whole new plan referring to it as materials management, not just solid waste and landfill kind of things of how they're going to handle that. So now they have come out with legislation that we have described for that. And we have, have to have for, for a planning committee to put a, put a new plan together like this, basically to oversee it. I envision us bringing in consultant, a consultant to help us do that along with Rachel's help. And then the group kind of okays that and sees it through the public hearing and basically serves a board position kind of looking at that. And there are 11 identified positions that need to be filled on this document. And so we have a dozen people that represent pretty close to that. We've checked with them to see if we can't get exactly what the definition is. Can we flex a little bit? And they indicated that yes, we, yes, we can. So our group has been working for probably three or four months trying to talk to people and identify people, a slate of people that would do that. You probably have that, do we have another slide?
They have the agenda request, but we can, I can read it.
So, do you have the list also?
Yes. Sorry. I know I'm very quiet. So we did recommend a lot of the people on our current solid waste oversight committee did fit the description of the new material management committee. So we were able to, a lot of these people are already on that committee. So it'll be kind of a seamless transition for them. And then we've also added a few new people from mostly the waste diversion sector, including Ken Walsh from Walsh Construction Company, Ron Usis from Granger, Brent from Padnos in town here, Rob Heathus from Yankee Springs, and our new executive director, Danielle at the Berry Conservation District. So those are all the new people in addition to the people that are already on solid waste.
Okay. Is this a name change or is this a fundamental shift in how we're going from solid waste oversight to materials management? Is this somebody in government deciding we needed to rename this? Or is this, is there, is there a practical purpose driving this change?
I would say it's a little bit of both. I think a lot of it with the material management planning is that we're trying to get less in the landfill. So we're bringing in more haulers and more reuse professionals to help us make plans for how we're going to keep things out of the landfill through installing new recycling drop-off stations, promoting composting. In our previous material management, community engagement grant, we identified a permanent household hazardous waste disposal location as one of our main priorities. So using their expertise to help us move forward with something like that. So it'll be, we'll still be doing the things that we're already doing, like our semi-annual hazardous waste collection event, the deer pickup, things like that. But we will also be working on this new plan. So it is a name change, but there's still an intention change with it as well.
So you guys are also involved in deer pickups?
We help coordinate that.
We fund that. We fund the deer pickup through the Sheriff's Department, yes.
Okay. Busy time of the year for that. So.
Yes.
So, and I see that there's no funding required for this. Is that still tipping fees are what's basically funding the materials management group then going forward?
Yes. So we will still be getting the tipping fees because we have that landfill host agreement. But we will also be getting the material management planning grants from the state. After our first meeting, the committee will hopefully approve my work plan. And then once that is approved by Eagle, we will be eligible for those grants. It'll be about $90,000 the first three, each year for the first three years, and then $60,000 a year for the following two years. So five full years of funding to plan and implement.
All right. So the, is this materials management plan a document similar to the one you have in front of us there? It's going to look something like this again? Okay.
Hopefully not as thick, but.
You're going to need consultants to help you with this as well, or is this all being done in-house?
With a consultant. I just, there are a number, all of the counties that have landfills are going through the same process. And we're checking with some of those right now, having an expert come in. A lot of it is, I shouldn't maybe use the term boilerplate, but pretty standard kind of stuff, pretty standard kind of stuff. And then, and then customization of the base plan that they present to us that we get from Eagle. And so I look for it to be pretty straightforward.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, they, they have released a template and it's really standard. It's pretty much fill in the blank. What do you have? What do you need?
Interesting. Questions from commissioners?
Mainly this is to appoint a new committee that's constituted according to the requirements of the state before, which frankly, I think are probably too specific because we've had some dedicated people involved with the solid waste oversight committee that don't necessarily now fit into the definitions of who should sit on this new committee. So we don't want to lose their, their efforts. We've got to find a way to keep them engaged. But most importantly, we have to designate a committee that fits the state requirements. And that's what's in front of you today.
Okay. Okay. Additional questions? Commissioner Doster?
I see that one of these proposed seats is for Catherine Getty. How does that work? Was that a, a chair appointment to put her on there? She should not vote on herself as an appointment from this board. You've already appointed her, is that correct? I'm just trying to make sure we don't have the conflict of interest.
It's a combination of planning and zoning, which, go ahead.
With the new responsibility, there needs to be a, an elected county official and an elected township official. She met that criteria by our recommendation. So we're only recommending to you that she is an elected official. She happens to serve on the group and be, you know, experienced and dedicated in what we're doing. So that's why we recommended her for that. And for a township elected official, could be any elected official, we've selected Rob Heathus to represent all the townships and township elected people that he meets that category and does a recycling Yankee.
We've had two commissioners assigned to.
That's how I recall it, yes.
Catherine and myself. It works out that we, each of us happen to fill one of the requirements the state has now imposed. Before, we were on there strictly because we were designated by.
The chair or.
To represent the county. So, yeah, that still is the case. But now we also happen to fit into two of the required slots. So Catherine's on there as a county elected, a county official. I'm on there because one of the other assignments that I have represented this board is on the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission. And that's also, we need a representative from a regional planning organization. So I happen to fit that. So.
Okay. So should, do you plan on voting on this?
I don't know why. I mean, we're not, it's not a compensated commit, you know, position or anything. So I'd be happy to abstain if you think we would do that. Frankly, if you want to volunteer, I'll be happy.
I'm just, you know, me, I'm worried about the crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on the appointments.
I don't see it being a conflict of interest, especially since he's been serving on this board, Catherine.
It's just the process is what I'm worried about. Whether, the way I'm understanding it, they're making the recommendation, they've made a recommendation. I don't feel that the, the two board members should vote for, to appoint themselves onto this. The rest of the board, they should abstain is my point.
Happy to.
You're still going to get it.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Additional questions for Rachel or for Frank? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to appoint Don Johnson III, Ken Walsh, Ron Ezeice, Sarah Moye, Moyer Cale, Brent Cohen, Jody Pestle, Catherine Getty, Rob Heathus, Craig Stoltenberg, Frank Fiala, David Hatfield, Daniel Zoller to the Berry County Materials Management Planning Commission, MMPC, for the term beginning 12/1/2024 and ending 11/30/2029.
So move, Smelker?
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Tunisin to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to appoint Don Johnson III, Ken Walsh, Ron Ice, Ice and Heiss, Sarah Moye, Moyer Cale, Brent Cohen, Jody Pestle, Catherine Getty, Rob Heathus, Craig Stoltenberg, Frank Fiala, David Hatfield, Daniel Zoller to the Berry County Materials Management Planning Committee, MMPC, for the term beginning 12/1/2024 and ending 11/30/2029. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Abstention.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Okay.
If you didn't vote no.
One abstention. One abstention noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Price. The fiscal year 2025 adult specialty court grant agreements. I can always tell when Tammy is on the agenda because my agenda like doubles, triples, and quadruples in size to hundreds of pages. So I know you're coming, so. Thank you for all your work on that. I read that stuff and it's like.
Yeah.
Amazing stuff, so.
It's great. If you can't sleep at night, you can get up and read that.
Yeah.
So I'm here asking for your signature and approval on five different grants. Pretty basic boilerplate contracts, I do want to point out. The differences between last year and this year. So in 2024, our total grant funding for sobriety court was $253,862. This year it's $180,000. For drug court, last year, $312,000. This year, $200,000. For Swift and Sure, it was $190,000. This year, an increase to $200,000. And SWIMBA, last year was $320,100 and this year it's $81,743. That seems bleak, but it's not. Mid-year, the state will reallocate funding. So other counties that are not funding as expected, that money will shift to counties that are spending beyond the expectations. And just last year alone, we went for drug court. We had an increase of $90,000 mid-year because we asked for additional funding. For sobriety court, they increased our funding by $66,862. So even though funding isn't where it should have been, I believe we'll be okay. We do not have the BJA grant, which funded some extra things for the court. It was never intended to be consistent funding, but it allowed for us to do a lot of training and additional treatment. Also, just because I'm before you today, I think it's a good time to talk about some of the things that we've done. In sobriety court during 2024, we had 30 open cases. We also had 12 successful graduates from the program. While that might not seem like much, we're keeping those folks out of prison. We're helping those people be successful, gainfully employed, members of our community who you would want to live next to or have at your table. Drug court, we had 29 open cases. Nine of those folks were successful graduates from that program as well. Swift and Sure, we had 32 open cases and five successful graduates. So I think those are pretty good numbers, especially when you think about how much crime costs or putting them in prison compared to keeping them in our community as successful, rehabilitated folks, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions from commissioners? Well, I appreciate your work on this stuff. I certainly appreciate those updates and the statistics. That tells me that the programs are working. You guys are doing a great job. I appreciate everything you guys are doing there. I am concerned that the, the cuts in funding continue, but I guess, is this just the trend where they're starting out low and then bumping it up high? They're, they're not necessarily cutting it, they're just being a little more conservative with their allocations at this point?
Yes, I think that is. You know, they want to make sure that all of their money is getting spent in the best way possible. And so I think that's how they've kind of recreated that mid-year, they look at our spending, they'll either reach out to us or we can reach out to them and say we predict that we're going to have this additional spending, which is kind of nice because it's hard to predict how many folks you're going to have in your program. And that makes a difference in how much you're going to spend because we really spend per person in our program. And we don't know how many we're going to have come towards us. So it really does work out. With SWIMBA, we didn't spend a lot of that money last year. We only spent $19,360.31. And so I think that was, that was fair to reduce that spending so that other folks would have access to it if they needed it. The issue with spending all of that money is that it's very specific what you can use that money for. And we also want to spend the money out of our grants because those are every year. And so in order to get funded next year, you have to show that you're going to use the money.
Absolutely. Questions? Well, we appreciate the work you're doing in the community. That certainly makes an impact, especially when you think about neighborhoods and keeping people out of prison and recidivism rates and all those things. That's all great news. So keep up the great work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners approval of the fiscal year 2025 SCAO grant contracts for the adult drug court, sobriety court, swift and sure sanctions, probation court, and approval of the net cost agreement for substance use disorder services through Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity for fiscal year 2025 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreements.
So move Smelker.
Support Hatfield.
Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield to recommend of the board of commissioners approval of the fiscal year 2025 SCAO grant contracts for the adult drug court, sobriety court, swift and sure sanctions, probation program, and approval for the net cost agreement for substance use disorder services through Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity for fiscal year 2025 and authorize the board chairperson to sign the agreements. Additional discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions noted?
No.
Thank you. The motion passes. Eric?
Actually, Gino's going to take this one.
Okay. Good morning, Gino.
Good morning. What I'm here today is to ask for permission to use some of our funds at the airport. We're doing, there was a taxiway expenditure that was approved last year. It was supposed to happen this year, but it's fiscal year 25, so it's going to happen later next year. And what we need to, what we need to do is I need to borrow funds to pay for a vendor, but we're going to be paid back those funds through the grant process. All of this has already been approved. But with our terminal project coming in this year, we can only sign federally for one grant per year for this type of grant, I should say, for a building grant. So we, we want the building to go forward, which they're going to start here in about a month. So we signed for that grant. This other taxiway grant, that was like all the, all the legwork was done before me, but next year we're going to be able to sign for that grant. It's kind of, it's kind of confusing, but I can only sign for one grant per year for construction. And we weren't going to do the taxi, taxiways do fiscal 25. The terminal was to do, go immediately into play, so.
Okay.
We have the funding in-house, but as per the agreement with the city county and the airport, anything over the, I believe it's $5,000 has to be approved. So that's what we're asking is to spend our own money. We're not coming to you for money. We're just saying, can I spend my money, knowing that we'll be paid back whenever our grant is approved, whenever our grant flows next year.
And City Hastings has already approved this?
I, I don't believe so. I believe, yeah, the next meeting, we'll be, we'll be going in for that one. So what we, the, the engineering firm that's handling it already spoke to all the other contractors and they're working forward without being paid, knowing that the grant is already approved. We just had one that was a rather small vendor and we have to be prepared to pay that money either this year or sometime in fiscal 25. And theirs is mostly like a boring project, making sure soil samples and all the D and R, yeah, all that type of stuff is taken care of.
Okay. Awesome. Commissioner Tunisin, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, it's just basically, they need the money now to, out of the airport account just to, to pay for this. They will be reimbursed, so.
Additional questions? Comments?
We have done this before, that we have to pay a year in advance and then the grant money comes through and that money comes back to the airport treasury, so.
Okay. I don't have any questions. It seems pretty cut and dry.
We have enough money in there to make our payments.
There you go. There you go. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners approval in accordance with the airport commission joint operating agreement of expenditures of $17,000 as the airport chair of the 2025 taxiway project for the Hastings City Berry County Airport.
So move.
Support.
Motion by Tunisin, support by Smelker to recommend of the board of commissioners approval in accordance with the airport commission joint operating agreement of expenditures of $17,000 as the airport chair of the 2025 taxiway project for the Hastings City Berry County Airport. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
That's right.
Coming off the bench. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning.
In your packet, it's a extension of the contract with the Berry County Chamber slash Economic Development Alliance for the 2025 year. It is not, it's an unchanged amount from 2024. I've already been warned that she will be coming back to ask for more money.
Unchanged so far.
Unchanged so far is correct. So we're recommending approval of the contract with the Chamber and Economic Development Alliance for 2025.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
I hope all, I, I know all of you received the invitation to the Economic Development Summit tomorrow afternoon. I hope that you will attend if at all possible. They've got some great speakers lined up. But most importantly, they're also going to be talking about the future and how the Chamber Economic Development Alliance wants to approach that. I think for those of you that have been following this for a number of years, you know that the combined Chamber Economic Development Alliance has truly succeeded at becoming a countywide organization compared to what they were 10 years ago. And we owe a lot of that to Jennifer, her efforts. But you're now seeing significant projects pop up throughout the county that they've had a hand in moving forward. But it's impossible to consider sustaining that kind of effort with the organization budget and staffing size that they have now. Jennifer and the board put together, I think, a very attractive proposal to address both of those issues with a significant growth in private sector funding. So I would like all of us to, you know, understand that to the fullest extent possible and be prepared to be an advocate for them because we are certainly a significant benefactor. We, the county, is a significant benefactor of what they've been able to achieve over the last couple of years. I don't care whether we're talking about housing or broadband expansion, new businesses, expansion of businesses, there's a lot going on.
Childcare, just, it just touches everything, so.
Touches everything.
Thank you.
They've done well. So I certainly, you know, support the continuation of our support because I think it sends a strong message to the private sector that we endorse what's going on, but they also now need to step up and help sustain it for future years.
Jennifer, how many housing units did you say that are planned or either in process or planned in the county right now?
904.
904.
Units.
And that includes the Mid-Villa project and some of the other things going on?
Yep.
It's been some wins in that category for sure, so. Additional questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair? This is something that we do every year, every year?
Yes.
And what was it last year? Same amount, cool. Something I would like to see though, to take to, because I have both the Village of Nashville and the Village of Woodland, the breakdown of activities there so I can show them what you're doing there in the future.
They know. I think we're with them all the time. So the Village of Nashville and the Village of Woodland, we have dedicated people, so Nicole spends a lot of time with them.
Just give it to them.
You want us to.
Give the commissioners.
Give you about how much percentage of our time we spend in these?
Just what you're doing with them.
Because, you know, I, I like, people ask me questions, you know, so you approve this, what are they doing in our town, this town? So you may be talking maybe to the village council, but they may or may not be effective in communicating that to everyone. Because I get a lot of questions from just, you know, the general public not in a meeting.
Okay. So are you asking what kinds of things do we do in those areas?
No, I would, just like, not right now.
Okay. Oh, sure. Absolutely. Okay, we'll get your report.
In the loop, so that when I say, you know, I approve this continuation and here's what, you know, what's been going on in our community with it.
Absolutely. I'll have a report, a report put together and sent over to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Doster?
I had the same question, whether this was an increase over last year. Apparently not.
It is not, so, okay.
And Mike, I appreciate the question, but you know, the makeup of that changes every year. And I think that that's one reason why I hope that everybody will have a chance to attend summit, the summit, because you're going to get an overview of everything that's been touched over the last year or two. And yes, those, as much as being specific projects are examples of what they're capable of helping other entities in, in the county do. So I think there are some very good examples that Jennifer will give you about specific programs in Nashville and in Woodland. But it, it's important to understand what's going on everywhere because they're all examples of things that can happen and that they'll facilitate happening.
Absolutely. Additional questions or comments?
I got a comment, just a comment on the housing because we've been hearing that for, ever since I've been on this board, which has only been two years, which I can't believe has gone by that fast. But that's all you heard about was addressing the, the housing issue and, and you're doing a great job at that.
Thank you.
Okay, 900 some additional places to live is a big deal for Berry County, okay?
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I haven't heard, but at one point they were saying Tiden, the lots across the street here were sold out or.
They are, yeah.
Really, so.
Already full.
You know? It is needed. It is needed. And if there's no additional questions, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners approval of the agreement for economic development services between Berry County and the Berry County Chamber and Economic Development Alliance for the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
So move.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Cantfield, Campbell, Cantfield, Campbell or Cantfield. Campbell to recommend of the board of commissioners approval for the agreement for economic development services between Berry County and Berry County Chamber and Economic Development Alliance for the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. See you tomorrow, Jennifer. Next up, salaries for road commissioners.
The county commission is charged with not only appointing the road commission, but also setting the salary of the road commission. This has not been done in many, many years since the 90s. What, we had a request from the road commission to increase their pay from $3,400 per year to $5,000 per year.
Okay. Jake, did you want to add anything to that?
1996 was the last time that it was updated and before it's some godly amount, it's probably worth doing a, you know, reasonable adjustment prior to it being 50 years or 60 years. Yeah, that's, that he covered.
There's been like no change in prices over the last 30 years, have there? I can't see why, but, you know. Okay. Questions from commissioners?
Just a comment. I don't understand why we have control, because we don't have control over their benefits or anything like that. Why do we have control over their wages?
The statute, we're set, P283 of 1909, there's a reason why you have to set their wages.
Mr. Doster?
Am I reading this correct, that there's also a per diem as well? That's granted?
Okay.
Yeah, they have, they have a per diem based on the length of time. We didn't change anything from the way it was before, other than moving the base from $3,400 to $5,000. We weren't adjusting the per diem, sorry, the per diems or anything else. We did give you guys, I think in your packet were some comparison counties around the area that's pretty normal as far as, you know, it depends on how. That's pretty normal, as far as, you know, it depends on how involved that commissioner is going to get in additional meetings or serving on additional boards that are requested of the road commission. So it kind of makes it even out a little bit for those that take a larger role.
Mr. Smelker?
On the per diems, that's not for the two meetings a month that's scheduled, right? This is for extra meetings?
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to set the base salary for Berry County road commissioners at $5,000 effective 1/1/25.
So moved.
Support.
Hatfield.
Motion by Tunison, support by Hatfield, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to set base salary for Berry County road commissioners at $5,000 effective 1/1/25. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next up, temporary part-time duty treasurer position.
As part of the transition that we have upcoming with all of our elected officials, we have two registered deeds and clerk who are already internal hires, sorry, internal hires, but internal individuals who are being elected to the office, assuming that they win today. And assuming that Ms. Shumway wins today as treasurer, we don't have an experienced individual. She is coming from the outside. We've been, one of the things I believe you charged me with when I started was to try to figure out a way to mentor, help move forward, something to do with elected officials. One of my concerns is just that gap with Kelly coming in from the outway outside. She's got experience, she's got financial background with banking, but there are a lot of process-driven issues in the treasurer's office. And just to throw her in without any sort of transition is problematic in my mind. There are additional things that we're exploring, but at a minimum, she had planned on shadowing Sue. But I would propose to take it a step further. At the end of November, she's resigning from Lake Trusper Community Committee Union. I am proposing that we hire her as a deputy treasurer for the month of December. That would allow her to get her feet wet in the office, learn from Sue, work with Sue, work with Lori and the other staff, and hopefully prepare her to take over in January. And I would love to say we had six months to do it with her, but a month at least is a starting point. So we're proposing that we hire Kelly Shumway, starting December 2nd, at the rate of $20.87 an hour. Luella will put the figures together, the total will be $2,700 for the month of December. It's a temporary position, no benefits. So that just gets us to the point where she has two and a half weeks she could spend with Sue learning, and then we will explore additional assistance if necessary at that point.
Okay. And you said the treasurer is taking some vacation time, so it's only a couple of weeks.
She's done the 19th.
She's done the 19th, okay. So it's not even a full month?
No, two and a half weeks.
Two and a half weeks, okay.
But she would have the rest of the month to continue working outside of the holidays in the office, try to figure out how things work. And I think that's my biggest key, I need to get her in the office, working with the staff.
I agree. I think that's a very prudent step. Comments?
Eric asked me to join him in a meeting with Kelly. Luella was also there, as was Dave DeHaan from Raymond, who provided a lot of our county's support services. I think that Kelly has, certainly has the aptitude for the position, but there's a lot, we spent a lot of time talking about specific reporting that has a lot of fine points to it. Dave DeHaan is certainly what has been heavily involved in that. He's prepared to help with her education, but we're creating a real potential issue if we don't get Kelly engaged as early as possible to have her come in cold, January 1, with, yeah, particularly some of the regulatory reporting, the audit reporting that she needs to be prepared to move forward with quickly. We need to get her in there. So for me, this makes an awful lot of sense.
Mr. Tunison?
Yep. This is only common sense to get her in there as soon as we can because that's, can't throw her to the wolves. So that's a little overwhelming for her.
All right. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
Like Eric said there, it seems like one month is really a crush course.
It will be.
In the event, do we have a plan at that point that we can help her along if needed still?
Yeah, we're exploring different options, Bruce. What Mr. DeHaan, as Chris Raffo mentioned, is that their offices, they help us with year-end items anyways. So, and they've been through, working with the treasurer, Dave, when it was, you know, Walker, Fluke, Sheldon, they've been that support for years. So they'll be there to help and say, hey, this is what typically I ask for. We've also talked to Sue about the possibility of helping in '25 for a bit, maybe on certain process, like, you know, tax reconciliation with the townships or other big items. That's something we're still exploring, I kind of want to see how December goes. We also have the other offices, you know, we're trying to hire, allow the clerk to post the jobs they have open and get somebody on board soon so they can help with that transition and that learning that just is necessary in every office. So I'm hopeful this is the step here and hopefully in the other offices will help move them forward as necessary to.
Sounds like a good plan.
Hopefully.
It's kind of an important position.
They control a little bit of money, so.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval to hire a temporary part-time deputy treasurer for the month of December 2024 at an hourly pay rate of $20.87.
So moved.
Hatfield.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval to hire a temporary part-time deputy treasurer for the month of December 2024 at an hourly pay rate of $20.87. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next up, human resources manager job description and classification.
One of the items that was in the proposed budget was the creation of a new position in the administration office. In my time here, I've seen there are some improvements we need to do in this area. Improvements we need to do in our onboarding of staff. It's just one missed area that, you know, and it's typical as we've grown as a county, it's just people have picked up the slack, but there, this is an area we need to improve. And I think Michael saw that before me, and that's why this was proposed in the budget. So we went through the process of creating the job description, sending it through the salary classification process, which if you're not aware, it is a very formal process. They go through and look at the description, they look at different aspects, freedom to act as the position, interaction with the public, technical knowledge, things like that. And it scored, goes through a matrix which was created back in 14, 15, when we had the consultants in to do that. And this came out as a salary classification of a grade 13. So we're here to recommend the approval of the job description and the salary classification.
Okay. I know this has been coming, I know when we had talked, we'd said the employee manual hasn't been updated somewhere between ever and 30 years, 96.
96.
It's been a few minutes, so things have changed a little bit since then. Except, of course, road commissioner salary, so, you know, that hasn't changed. Questions from commissioners? Seems like it's pretty straightforward, reading through the whole proposal and the requirements and the job description. When are we advertising or when are we looking to fill this position?
As soon as you approve the position, we'll get advertised with expectation, someone will start in '25.
'25, okay.
It's in the budget, so unless we wanted to come before you earlier, but process wise at this point, we're not going to get somebody in before the end of the year anyway, which is not my intention.
Okay. And it's already budgeted, it's in the 2025 budget, okay?
I see the grade level 13. I don't know the grade levels that well, do we have any rough idea of what that is? Starting wages at grade level 13?
I believe it's, well, $70,013.
No, thank you.
There's 15 steps in the wage classification, and this is where that, this one came out as a 13.
Okay. If there are no additional questions, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached human resources manager job description.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached human resources manager job description. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
I would just. Sorry about that.
I had expressed to the board that I had some concerns about this one. We discussed the budget because it was kind of a surprise, I thought, at that point, this position being added in the budget. Immediately thereafterwards, Eric sent me all this information, and I was able to have a lot of time to go over it, and it quanled my concerns. So I thought that that was a good proactive move on Eric's part because there's a lot of explanation here that was not put in when we adopted the budget.
Agreed. Thank you. Good communication. Okay, we'll try that again. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Deputy county administrator revised job description. This also went through the classification?
It did. Previous to the classification, this was a Departmenthead 14 level. After reviewing the updated job description, the classification committee elevated it to a 15. And I will tell you that they're not an easy process. I know, and those are sitting in the room. We have many others, I think four or five others on the committee. They're tough when they look at it, it's not just the rubber stamps. If anybody thinks it is, come sit through one of those. So we really do look at the job and try to compare it to others in the organization. And when we looked at responsibilities for the deputy administrator and, I will tell you, I still think we're underpaying Luella in that position, looking at regional, looking at salary of other counties comparable, we're under comparable, we're the lowest for the deputy administrator. But that's neither here nor there with something else I'd like to tackle in '25. But for now, we looked at the classification, we're recommending increasing it to a DH 15.
DH 15, okay. I agree, Luella has a very important position in the county, especially with Michael's departure, Eric's arrival, there's a knowledge gap in there, some institutional knowledge. It's very important for us to maintain, and Luella has been here and done a fantastic job for the county. So I think this is deserved, and just so you know, this was something that had been discussed with Michael even prior to Eric of reviewing this and advising it. And I agree that as we go through this, get the HR director in place, get through some of the things that we have. We have union contracts coming up next year, but I think we need to evaluate some of our deputies administratively and look at this going into next year in further detail as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I'd first want to tell you she's done a great job, but this decision today is not about Luella, this decision is about the position. Because if we were having a discussion about Luella, this would be a different discussion. And so position-wise, this should be a 15, or frankly, should not be in the salary classification. But for now, we're recommending a 15, and we'll tackle the rest soon.
Okay. Questions from commissioners? Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners the reclassification of deputy administrator from DH 14 to DH 15, effective immediately.
So moved.
Hatfield.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners reclassification of the deputy administrator from DH 14 to DH 15, effective immediately. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. That completes the first 10 items on our agenda. Next, we are going to go into closed session. So as the chair, I move we go into closed session in accordance with Public Act 267 of 1976, 15.268, Section 8H, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute specifically to consider a written legal opinion with attorney-client privilege. Is there support?
Support.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved, we will now go into closed session. Are we meeting in the jury room? Are we, jury room, as usual? Okay, if it's available, all right. All right.
Mics are live?
Yep, mics are live.
The Chair would entertain a motion to come from closed session back to open session. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Tunisson, support by Hatfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you Commissioners. The Chair would also entertain a motion after closed session to accept the recommendation of our Attorney moving forward.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield to accept the Attorney's recommendation moving forward. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the Board may do so for up to three minutes. Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Doster.
Yesterday, Eric and I visited Branch County and the jail there that was for the MAC SMART meeting, which was prior to the tour. And those SMART meetings, they've just kind of been reinstituted since, you know, or...
COVID.
COVID, yes. And they give pretty good legislative analysis and updates at those. I'm thinking that maybe in the future, we should, like your next term, that maybe you appoint a member of this Board to be our representative. Anybody should be able to go as well, but we should have somebody at the table of those because they're planning, they're not sure what kind of a schedule they're going to have going forward, but at least quarterly, if not by monthly, is what they're thinking. And then each county in this region takes a turn hosting, which it would be nice if we were able to do that at some point here. The tour was very informative. That jail is very well set up, I would say. It's kind of, the rooms are kind of in a pie shapes that... It's kind of, the rooms are kind of in a pie shapes with a central command in the center that can see into every area of the thing, as well as there are like 220 cameras that are monitored as well. It is set up so that now they gave about, they gave two different capacities that I recall on that.
Two hundred and two.
Two hundred and two beds is their, what they had built that for, but as, you know, that was over three years ago. And things have changed kind of dramatically, so as it turns out, they've kind of significantly overbuilt. They were running 60 to 70 used beds for, and they have 202 available. The way that they have set the system up, the jail, it can be manned with five people, correction officers. Doesn't matter if they have one bed used or 202 beds used, it still takes five officers to man it. I'd asked them what they were doing with all of their empty beds. They are in the process of considering renting those out.
For the homeless?
No, for, well, it'd be a cheap, it'd be a cheap bed for that. The, at the, currently they're asking for a rate of $30 a bed for a day, which is remarkably inexpensive.
That includes food?
Yes, it does. Because their costs are already incurred there, so we asked, well, what does it cost you to have somebody in one of those beds? And it was higher than that. So they're willing to make a deal basically in order to attract other people to use their beds because they've got all these costs that are, you know, already occurred. So if you start thinking, you know, just for numbers wise, say our jails, if it ran 50 beds being used, which is about what it is, I think, right now on an average, times $30 a day, that's $150,000 a day. You times that by 365, that's 1.500 dollars a day, I mean, yeah. That'd be $530 some thousand dollars for a year. If you look at the cost of building a jail, it's like maybe $20 million. 5% interest on that would be $1 million worth of interest a year, where you could rent enough beds for almost half of that. When you start looking at numbers like that, I think that it is well worth investigating that as an option other than building a jail at this point necessarily. Because I think that there could be, I mean, obviously there are going to be other expenses. You're still going to need, you know, something for your administration and your road patrol, and you would need a, an overnight lockup. But we also have a building across the street that was used for exactly that purpose. That front of the court building was also used by the city for that. And it even has, you know, bars on the windows for a lockup already. And it's about the same size as what would be necessary for the administration and the road patrol. I think that it's well worth having that as an option to look at alongside of building a new jail. A new jail is going to demand a millage that may be a lot more difficult to pass than we're anticipating. This could go off many, many years, and I don't know that we... You only have one opportunity to do something like that, and that's when you don't have a jail currently. Once you build a new jail, you could never do this as an option where you rent somebody else's jail. And, you know, things have changed over the years. We used to think that it was so necessary to move all these people from the jail to the courthouse all the time. And now almost, you know, the vast majority of that is done over the internet. You only practically need to bring them for sentencing, you know, which could be a travel of one van a week or something for transportation. Anyways, I think that it's, I think the costs are substantially lower than I had anticipated, or something like that, that actually would make it feasible, would actually save money maybe. And it could be something that we think of doing for, you know, a period of four years or something until we're certain about what we want to do with the jail. Anyways, that was my thought on that.
And certainly an option if we had a jail failure. It's nice to know that there is something out there to, you know, use on the interim until we figure out that issue and evaluate it. But from a logistics standpoint, it's a little difficult having it that far away. I'm sure that was an hour and 15, hour and 20 minutes.
Yes.
To get down there, so, you know, hopefully for $30, they would come, be willing to come pick up our prisoners too. So, you know, we'd include that in the cost.
Well, and it's not the only jail in the neighborhood. I just picked that because we visited there. I would be request that the Board seriously consider their own visit there here. It sounds like you're going to be doing that.
Yep.
Next year, and I think multiple jails visits would be a good idea. And I think also taking somebody from the jail, somebody who's actually adept at how these things work would be a good idea. One question that we had for them was if you had to do it, you know, their jail's only three years old. Well, if you had to do it all over again, what have you learned? And there were, even though this thing is state of the art and is extremely well-built, there still was a number of things that they would change. The number of rubber lockup rooms for, you know, extraordinarily difficult clients, you know. The windows of being vertical instead of horizontal in the thing was a major thing that would have provided more space to view what's going on. They actually shifted as vertical, you know, they're just simple things that you can pick up by, by looking at a number of facilities. Thank you.
Good information. Commissioner Colton. Commissioner Smelker.
Did everybody get the email from Dennis Redman at the Expo Center?
Yes.
And do we have anybody that might be able to go? They would really like a Commissioner at that meeting, but at the same time is economic summit. Is, what about Marcia? Is she going to the summit?
Have to check with her.
She'd be a good one to go to that one because this event is not going to happen until she's in office.
Yeah, she's still working full-time, so, working on retirement, still working full-time.
But if there's anyone, I don't know, they're talking about having a large event at the Expo Center, and they would like a Commissioner to be there to listen to the...
What day of the week is it?
It's Wednesday, same day as the economic summit.
That's surprising, okay, I work, you know, they should do these like at a time when people don't work.
Yes, I'd like to bring Mr. Tunisson.
Unless you're done, or you're done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Dennis yesterday, Board Chairman there, they're anticipating 20,000 to 25,000 people to attend this. So it's a big deal for Hastings.
Not this meeting, right?
Oh, no.
It's the event itself.
Yeah, I should have clarified, but, yeah, but for the event itself, it sounds like they're really doing a great job of trying to promote this, and it's always going to bring in a lot of people to Hastings. So, other than that, I don't have much today.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Dar, do you know anything about this?
I couldn't catch what you were talking about.
It's a program event they're going to bring into the Expo Center, Country Rock or Rock the Country.
Yeah, yeah, we've got contact with them, talking about security and everything. Kid Rock, it's an organization run by Kid Rock and I forget what the other talent is, and they bring talent all around and they have a big concert. Yes, it's capable of bringing 20, 30,000 people in. It's scheduled for next June, so it won't just be one day.
It's a two-day festival or something like that. Being in the middle of four major metropolitan areas, it could be more than that, so be prepared.
Are you sending anyone to this meeting, Dar?
What?
It's tomorrow at 1:00, same time.
I didn't know about it. We've been talking to the security director directly.
We will forward the email to you, so if you want to send somebody.
Commissioner Campbell. How's the hand?
Well, my frustration level is a little higher than it used to be. It was coming, you'll get there. Just wanted to mention that we have Veterans Day coming up on Monday. Dalton Schools will be doing their program in the afternoon on Friday, and we always say we have a program at our post. So if you know any veterans, tell them, come on out, 7 o'clock at the post. One thing I always remember in the earlier days, and I'm sure John does too, thanking a veteran was something we never heard. And it's just, it means so much now when you walk through a store and somebody thanks you as a veteran. Really makes you think maybe what we did was, was what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hatfield.
Once again, just the reminder, the Economic Development Alliance Summit tomorrow afternoon, 1 o'clock. If at all possible, please attend. I think you'll find it extraordinarily interesting. Also, we got a notice from the City of Hastings that the Hastings Downtown Development Authority is going to hold a public information session subject, under the Public Act 58 requirements on Thursday, November 21st. Eric, do we have a time for that?
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m., okay. As you know, if you follow social media at all, a lot of comments, pro and con, on the new downtown streetscape. Don't believe all the negatives that you read. We did not lose 50 parking spots. That number seems to grow every time, with every additional post. It was less than a dozen, so, and if you've driven through downtown, I think that most will agree that it looks really, really nice. And new holiday decorations yet to come. But public meeting Thursday, 21st at 8:00.
Fantastic.
Find out the truth.
The truth doesn't matter. You can't handle the truth, isn't that the life, so...
Mr. Chair, could I just add one other thing? I thought of is that, I don't know if you're all aware, but Smith and Doster, the...
Yes.
Burnt yesterday in downtown Dalton, one of the central buildings right across from the school, total loss.
That used to be the oldest car lot in Michigan or United States?
I think it was third in the U.S. So probably first in the state, I imagine. Been in operations since at least 20, 1922.
It is a total loss. I think the paint shop minus survives, but the building is gone, so...
Any damage to surrounding properties?
I stopped and looked it over today, and it didn't appear other than the house that was part of it.
Yeah.
But...
The central dispatcher, they kept it intact.
Confined?
Yes. So on Bruce's thought too, for Veterans Day, the Moose in Dalton is doing free meals for all veterans from 4:30 to 6:30. So if you want to attend that, that is available to all veterans next week, and then go to the post and see Bruce. So next Monday.
What time is it going to be there?
Friday night?
Yeah, the schools is on Friday, and then ours will follow that, 7 o'clock that night.
All right, the Moose is on Monday, next Monday night.
I believe it's 1:30. I think they usually make that so it goes to the end of the day for the kids or something.
Okay. And guess what? It's Election Day. The last day, you'll see commercials, so you know. You can turn your TV back on again, and unfortunately, there doesn't appear to be any Truth in advertising based on the commercials I've seen. But, you know, it's entertaining. But I appreciate all of you for the hard work you've put in this election season. I'm looking forward to working with all of you in the next term. I think all of you are successfully going to be re-elected after today's vote is counted. And we don't, although we don't know how the vote will end up with our President, we do know that we have survived through several different administrations, whether we like them, don't like them, love them, that we're all Americans, we all stand together, we all tend to unite. So we will keep our hopes and prayers alive, that we have the outcome that I'm predicting to myself. So we'll see how that goes, but it'll be interesting to see. But like I said, we are united, especially at the county level. We are united, we work together for everybody in the county regardless. So I appreciate, like I said, your service to the community, all of our service to the community, our first responders. I know our sheriffs here, that we want our polls to be safe, we want our election workers, our poll workers to be safe. We want everybody to run fast, fair, safe elections, and hopefully, before I go to bed tonight at 2:00 a.m., we'll have some results. And if you want me to call you and let you know what the results are, I will be happy to send you a text at that time. So we appreciate you, have a great day, enjoy our wonderful wet weather, which we needed.